All right, thank you, everybody. This is going to be one of the more unusual meetings that we will probably ever have. But I appreciate everyone actually participating, given all the events that are going on. So with that, we'll call the meeting to order. And Ms. Salter, will you do the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Thames?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton? Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andrews?
Here.
Mr. Harden?
Here.
And Mr. Wright?
Speaker over.
So you got eight presidents, you got a quorum?
I don't have it up, so...
Should we have our computer units, the speakers on the computer?
Yes.
All right. There we go.
There we go.
Still a little bit.
It's probably me.
I need to do that.
Okay.
There we go. You're good.
All right.
So you have eight presidents, you have a quorum?
Thank you. I skipped over the invocation. Mr. Jones, will you do the invocation for us?
Everyone, please rise. Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you for these incredible circumstances that our community, our county, our state, and our nation is currently involved with, with the coronavirus. We think about all those that have been affected. We think about family members. We pray for a speedy recovery. We pray for the country in general with the economy. We pray for all the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us, and always remember that in our prayers. We look forward to a very encouraging meeting tonight, and we pray that we get through this, and we ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'm still hearing someone.
Face the flag. Attention, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Chairman? Yes. There's really no reason we need to have the Zoom on if we're speaking into the mics and we're getting caught on camera. Is that correct? Correct. Correct. The mic is picking it up. So I just turned my phone off entirely. So just for the record, it is not me.
For the record, Mr. Wolverton's here.
All right. We have one addition to the agenda tonight. It will be added to other new business. It is item 260320, request for consideration to amend the fiscal year 1920 E-911 fund budget to fund possible dispatch overtime brought to us by Brandon Broadhead and Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. So that will be added to other new business. With that, do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda? So moved. I'll take a motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. Higginbotham. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? So that is nine to zero now?
Did you vote that, Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. All right, next, we'll take up the consent agenda, which is going to be a little bit different tonight from most nights. Tonight, we have added all of the public hearings, as well as the public hearing, the item that had a public hearing at our last meeting dealing with the Ochsmore rezoning request. All of those items are on the consent agenda to be carried over until the first council meeting in May. And that would be 070120, 081019, and 120320. Second. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. McCluskey. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, that's also nine to zero.
President, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you mind backing up if y'all are going to entertain the motions for the minutes? Are y'all going to carry those over?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize. I skipped over that. So what happens when Mr. Wright isn't here?
You got it. Come on.
All right.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, nine to zero. I would entertain a similar motion for March 9 minutes.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for keeping me straight.
And I don't have any board vacancies update. We'll talk about that later in the other, but I don't have anything for you on that.
You don't have, I'm sorry.
I don't have anything for you on that tonight, the board vacancies. But we have an item later for you to talk about, about, they're not, about not meeting, but I don't have anything right now about opening any at this point.
Okay. Do you have something?
So Ward 1 received notice that our part board member was turning in the resignation. So we would like to open the Ward 1 part board position for two weeks.
I'm looking at it until May.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I was about to say.
Two weeks is too short.
Yeah.
Forgot.
You said part board.
Part board, Ward 1.
Yeah.
So maybe open the first one May?
Yeah, that's...
I would tell you.
Give us plenty of time, too.
May 1?
Yep, sounds good. Thank you.
And Mr. Kendrick reminded me, too, every year, we have one Board of Education member that rolls off every year, and it has to be appointed in April, doesn't it?
What the code says.
Code says. I don't know what we'll do with it. So we do need to open.
This is Ward...
I'll have to go, huh? I'll have to go pull my book real quick and see.
I think it's Ward.
Which board is it?
I think it's Ward.
It is my ward. Yeah, it is.
Board of Education?
Yeah, it is. Yeah.
So we need to open that so that it can be, it needs to, that position needs to be appointed in May? I mean, in April?
It's supposed to, yeah.
It's what the code says.
Unusual.
I wonder if they didn't make the appointment.
Right, I remember. So, Ms. Andrews, do you want to open that for some period of time in April and until the middle of April, say? And then, I don't know how we'd even do interviews to tell you the truth, if we get multiple people to... Zoom.
The last council meeting, if we're able to have it as normal, is going to be the 27th, but I don't know if we'll be able to have it as normal. But the council meetings would be the 13th and the 27th.
I presume we're not meeting at all in April, is that right?
We will be, we will have council meetings because we're required to.
Okay, but not...
They will probably be remote meetings.
I just don't see us doing interviews the month of April. I just don't mean, I just...
Mr. Kendrick, if we don't do it in April, what does that mean exactly? Or do we know?
It means we'll have to do it when we choose to do it.
When we choose to do it? Okay.
Can we open it through the middle of May?
I think so.
The first meeting in May is the 11th.
Okay, open it till May 1st, and then we have, and then we have interviews, and then, yeah, okay, that's good. Yeah.
Are you doing both of y'all till May 1st, or we're even here or something?
Both.
I will be May 1st, yes.
Oh, both of them are going to be open till May 1st?
Yes.
Do I need to go check the board book, or you, we know it's open? No, I'm, it's, it was...
I'm pretty sure.
Okay. I applied for that job, that's how I know it's opened. Five years ago. That's how I know it's open.
All right, so I need to make an announcement that both of these will be open until 4:30 on May 1st.
Correct.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that we have to interview them in April, we, in May. I mean, we can set a date later, just get the applications in.
Hold on, John. Brian, can we do better to hear John?
Put it up to your mic.
I don't know. I'm leaning into a computer, so it's, it's no big deal. Jennifer's got it handled. We're good.
Thank you, John.
All right, thanks, John.
Thank you for your vote of support.
And Ms. Smith, on the library board, before we get off that, we're still waiting on that one possible...
Well, he is, he has said that they moved, they actually moved, sorry, they moved, but the library board's not going to be meeting. I mean, we could go ahead and open it until May 1st if we want to do that, but the library board's not meeting anytime any soon, so...
I just stepped you off. You want to do it?
I mean, we can go ahead and open it. It's fine.
So the Ward 4, library board?
Until the same date?
Sure. Same time, same date.
Okay.
All right, any other board vacancies? Okay. All right, so back to the consent agenda, or, I'm sorry, we voted on that. So we're at the old business agenda. First item is 060220, request for consideration of funding street improvements from Councilors Gualtney and Thames. We have a report from Finance, I believe, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on March 16th and considered this. The committee met, and after hearing from Scott Tillman and Michael Kaz, the Regional Planning Commission, voted five to zero to recommend, recommend funding the diverging diamond project and carrying this over in committee for further action. So five to zero to move forward on this project.
All right. This won't be a resolution, but we will have a vote. Is there any further discussion before we vote? All right, so we have a recommendation out of Finance, we'll just go ahead and vote. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, it's nine to zero. All right, next item, 250417, request for consideration of 18th Street revitalization project brought to us by Mr. Thames. I believe we have another report out of Finance.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The, we had a bid opening, and Ms. Melody, what was the date of the bid opening?
It was the next day after Finance. It was on Cheese Day, the 17th, at 10:01.
Okay, March 17th that morning. So we're recommending that we accept the project, and the lowest responsible and responsive bidder is CBNA Construction LLC. This is relating, again, to the 18th Street South Improvement Project, and the total bid amount is 1.122 million, and that is, we have Exhibit A as part of that, and this will be handled through account number 12-11-5817424, 18th Street Project.
Mr. Jones, that's for the base bid, plus offering number one.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion on this item? There was not a recommend, this did not come with a recommendation, is that correct? So we need to do a motion?
I'd love to approve.
Okay. All right. Motion by Mr. Thames, second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, that is nine to zero, and that will be Resolution 2047?
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate the Ward 1 representatives supporting this project.
All right, next item, 020320, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Centas for fleet uniforms, coming to us from Gordon James Fleet Maintenance, and another report out of Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval. Motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham, second by Counselor Thames.
All right, so we have a recommendation out of Finance. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, that also passes nine to zero, and we, Resolution 2048. All right, next item, 030320, request to change position in streets and sanitation from labor supervisor to permit coordinator, brought to us by Mr. Squires, and another report out of Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item.
All right, we have a recommendation out of Finance. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Can you just refresh my memory on that one real quick? I don't remember what the permitting was for.
Talking about the labor supervisor?
Yeah.
We, we have a, we had a promotion due to retirement, and there was a position that the person that moved up was in that really needed to be a permit coordinator anyway instead of a labor supervisor. So Berkeley, we've never had that position, so they were basically working out of class. So Berkeley asked y'all to, to actually fund, or not fund, but to actually establish that position so that we can pull a list of the personnel board, because that's not a position we ever had. It's a two-step increase, it's from about 15 to a 17, but that's what that person actually does.
Gotcha.
He didn't need a budget amendment, though. He could still absorb it within his budget, but we can't pull a list without y'all actually creating the position, so we have a resolution to send to him.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Also passes nine to zero, and is Resolution 2049. All right, next item, 040320, request for consideration of potential bond repayment options from Councilors McCluskey, Thames, Jones, and myself. A report from Finance, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted five to zero to recommend engaging with Stiefel for the potential bond repayment options. And I'll just make a quick comment, that although things are very uncertain in the world right now, this, there's really never been a better time to do the refinance on this. So this is a substantial, will produce a substantial savings to the city. So that is a motion out of Finance, five to zero.
All right, we have a recommendation out of Finance. Any questions or comments from the council? All right, then we will go ahead and vote. All in favor? Any opposed? That one is also nine to zero, and will be Resolution 2050. Next item is 050320, request for consideration of reimbursement for pump rental and property repair costs relating to flooding at 2332 Linden Avenue, brought to us by Mark N.W. Westfall, Hummingbird Properties, and Wyatt Pugh and Greg Cobb. Another report out of Finance, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I must say that we worked really, really hard on this item, spent quite some time to work through this, but in the end, the committee met, voted five to zero to recommend spending, actual expenditures up to $6,000 from the small infrastructure fund, so five to zero.
All right, can I have a recommendation out of Finance? Any questions or comments?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If I remember correctly, this, this item had a $500 kind of, not a slush, but just a...
Rental.
Well, no, the, the property owner had, had kind of afforded himself a value of his time to do so. So I guess I was just trying to clarify, when we say actual expenditures up to 5,000, are we including his $500 that he said he was throwing in there? He did publicly say that he was willing to take that off of the total.
So are you looking to make it conditional, up to $5,000, but not to include the $500?
The $5,000, $6,000, excuse me.
And is actual expenses incurred, much of it incurred?
Yeah.
Right.
So it would not include his time?
Is that correct, Mr. Kendrick?
That's what I said.
Okay, so it would not, kind of bill for his time, or whatever. Okay, that's fine.
No, I believe that was John.
What's that, John?
Mr. Jones, am I online?
Greg. Greg?
Yes.
You there?
Yes, I am. I went over and surveyed the property, and I really see this as really, there's some fall there, but it's a grading problem. If you start at his patio, and you go out 10 feet, you've got about an inch and a half of fall. You go out to 17 feet, and you've got an inch and a quarter, which has got a rise in it. Okay, at the gate, it's got six inches of fall rushing towards the building. So what happens is you've got three sides of that property with the water rushing towards the building, and one little small area for it to come out. Well, when you've got that much water going towards it, the other water can't come out, because you're only talking about running an inch and a half, or inch and a quarter across rough ground and grass, which water doesn't run across rough ground and grass very well. But what's surrounding it's all coming at it. So I did survey it, and I made you a drawing, but it's, if they come tiny, it's hard to see. From the building, it's, it's 30 feet out, you're only down six inches, 30 feet away. And then it starts gaining towards the pipe. But that's, the problem is, it's got so much rushing towards it, and so little coming away from it, that's what's causing the problem.
So Greg, are you making, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I'm just saying that there's more problems there than what, it's not all our problem. Now, when it gets to the pipe, whoever dammed our pipe up, I don't know. But that's ridiculous, the city didn't do that. But I would say the biggest part of the problem is the grading of the lot is going towards the building. That's the majority of the problem right there. If it's way from the building, we wouldn't even be talking about this.
Hey, Greg, can you hear me? This is John Harden.
Yes, sir.
One of the questions I have, then, would you say he's at the base of a watershed, that he's got a bunch of folks coming into his, into that site from, from around him, surrounding him? I mean, I went over there and looked at it, too, and it was very hard to tell, but it was certainly very flat.
Yes, sir. I mean, I went over, I took a survey level over there, okay? And I mean, I've got real numbers, and it's not a guesstimate, these are actual numbers off through my survey level. And you've got all that water running at it, and from three directions, going towards the building, and then one, I found the flattest part, the most fall I could find, and I came off that concrete patio. I don't know what the interior was, but it's off the concrete patio. You know, you go out there 10 feet away, and you've got an inch and a quarter. I mean, fall. Well, my gosh, with everything running towards it, it's not going to come out. It's not, it's not going to happen. No matter what we do to our pipe, he's still going to have a problem.
Is that what you think? I mean, I know it hit that, I'm not sure exactly where he falls into the pipe, but are you saying that no matter what, we go fix that pipe, which we probably should, somebody needs to fix it, but, and open up that pipe and get the wall out of there? Are we not going to solve that problem in your mind?
We're going to solve part of it, but we're not going to solve all of it. If you get rains like we had in the past month, or two months ago, doesn't matter what we do to our pipe, he's still going to put water on him, because there's too much coming at him and not enough going away. It's just simple math. I mean, you've got 80% of the water running towards you, then water that's up high, it's got six inches fall coming towards you, and you've got one inch coming the other direction, where it's not coming.
All right, so Greg, are you suggesting that, are you saying that we should go ahead and do the pipe, and, and talk to him, and let him know that that's not going to solve everything? Or are you saying there's something that should be done other than this project?
Well, I think we need to fix the pipe, no doubt about that, but it's not all of it. He's still going, in a heavy rain like we had in the past two months, he's still going to get wet. But, you know, that's up to him. But if I owned that lot, I'd be in there to regrade.
Do we need to maybe seek some kind of indemnification from the property owner?
Perhaps that, or you may want to adjust your numbers, that how much of it is our fault, how much of it is his? Lee McLaughlin in Streets Department sent me some old email pictures that he says his lot's been regraded. But if, if you stand at the gate and look, it's all running towards the building, except that one little trail he's got for the drainage, and that drain is too flat. We wouldn't even lay a concrete pipe on that flat a grade.
Well, should we just carry this over and talk with the property owner?
I'd kind of like to, I kind of, I kind of feel like maybe we should, and let me get the new pipe in there, and let's shoot it again, and, you know, pray for a big rainstorm. Let me, let me show you what I'm saying is true. And I've been over it three times, and looked at different things, from every angle I could, except I didn't go inside his building. I'd like to go inside there and shoot grades coming out, to make sure it's not dropped down, but all the water is going towards him. I mean, most of the water's going towards him, and one little trail for it to get out, and that just doesn't work.
Well, and I don't mind carrying, carrying this item over, it may get carried over for a while.
I will say that he's about to roll into another month. He emailed us today, uh-huh, and he's about to have to extend the rental for another month. It's going to be longer than two weeks from now before completion. Then he needs to come back, and he said he will then want to come back in front of the Finance Committee to get approval, because they only approve payment of a one-month extension on the pump.
Well, but if we, we can...
That's correct.
We can proceed with opening up our pipe, we can proceed with that, sure. And if...
Yes, sir.
If we do that, and he still has a water issue, well, then that, that will prove that it wasn't our storm sewer system right there, right? And so...
Well, that's, that's kind of where I was going, is I'd like to have a pipe, and then have one good storm, and then looking, because I'd be over if it stormed and looking at it myself.
Mr. Jones?
You know, but I've had a contractor set up, put the pipe in last week, and that fell through on me, but I'm going to try to get the pipe in there just as fast as I can. And oh, by the way, on another update, Brookwood is almost finished, the pipe up to, we've got all the pipe in the ground, you've got to finish a manhole up there, and then all that project will be finished.
And Mr. Jones, you had a comment about the Linden?
Yes, yes, sir. I'm just wondering, does Mr. Kendrick have a recommendation in terms of the indemnification clause we could put within this?
What you need, not an indemnification, you need a release.
Okay, a release, okay.
If you're going to pay him $6,000, we could get a release. If you're not going to do that, then he's not going to sign a release, so whatever direction you like to go.
Then I think that's how we should modify this from the floor, is to go ahead and take care of this, and add a release.
Make it contingent upon him signing a release.
Contingent upon him signing a release to the City of Homewood, and if he's not willing to sign that, then we're just have to send it back to committee to work through.
So we're approving the 6,000, depending on us working on the property.
Contingent upon him signing a release that...
But contingent on him signing a release, saying that if he has problems...
Oh, moving forward, I got you, okay, I got you.
Mr. Wright, I saw you pop up. Are you trying to make a comment?
Yes, just one, one quick comment. And so with regard to, don't we have a request for various reimbursements on this as well?
Yeah, it's for a pump rental, and I was, I'm bespoke, he actually has two more weeks on the pump, on this particular month that he's paid, so it's reimbursement for pump rental.
Well, my question is, if we have various reimbursements, and we don't know who the cause of this, or the full cause and the complete cause of this problem, then perhaps we need to hold off on those reimbursements as well. I can't recall how large they were.
It's $6,000, all of the maximum actual expenses incurred is what the committee discussed, and that's what's in the resolution, is not to exceed $6,000, up to the actual expenses incurred.
And that's everything, Peter. That's the, that's the damages plus the pump rental. It's all the, it's all the expenses that he's incurred as a result of the water issue.
Well, and that's, and that's the problem, is because we don't know who's responsible for all these damages. And at this point in time, based on Greg's report, and therefore, I would, I think you guys are heading that way, to carry over at least reimbursements moving forward with the repair of our pipe and the cleaning out of that with appropriate indemnification, and holding off on reimbursements until we determine who's responsible for the damage.
There'd be no reimbursement, excuse me, there'd be no indemnification if we don't pay him any money.
He can't release it unless, he can't release us unless we pay him some money.
Okay, well.
A dollar.
I may have misunderstood, I thought we were getting a release in order to do the cleanup work of our pipe there.
No, that's in our drainage system.
Okay, fair enough.
The only thing you might have to get from him is permission to run out the front, which I understood that he was willing to give. But Greg could speak to the location, as I recall, it's redirecting the pipe, Greg, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I've got, we're trying to put it down the alley on our property, but I've also got signed agreements to take it to where it used to go, it goes between two houses. But we had utilities located, and it looks like we're going to try and take it down our alley, which would be shorter, due to the difference of at least forty feet of pipe, which is in asphalt, which is a cost item.
Greg, how soon, how soon are we thinking?
It was scheduled for last week, and it didn't happen, so I've got to get with the contractor and find out, when can you get over there? And if he doesn't get over there, I'll pull my guy off Brookwood, because we've got all that pipe laid, I'll pull him off there and get him down there, like, as fast as I can. I'll just switch contractors. If he doesn't move, then I'll bring the element out.
So I think we've got essentially two options. We can carry the whole thing over, figure, to talk to the property owner and about all of this, and, or we can move forward contingent upon the release, the property owner signing a release and doing what we said we were going to do in committee, assuming that he signs that release.
I kind of feel like if the property owner did make modifications to their property and grading that were kind of not really certain where, or what the sole source or partial source of the problem is, then.
Want to find that out first.
That's the way I'm leaning, but.
It's all, it's very, very obvious, he's got all that water running towards that building. You know, just that one little place where it can get out, and the rest of it's running towards the building.
Mr. Jones.
Because I searched out the low spot when I was over there.
Just, my question is to Mr. Cobb, is there any downside from going ahead and handling this with the release? Or what is your recommendation here? I couldn't hear your initial comments until we had you turned up on the system, so what is your recommendation here?
Well, I want to get my pipe in the ground to start with, but my position on it is that the biggest majority of the problem is his own fault, because it's all graded towards his building. Now, like I said, there's only one small area where it can get out, and it's so flat, you've got water that's six inches high running towards the building, and you've got one inch of fall coming away from the building, in one little area. But you've got probably eighty, ninety percent of the water running towards the building. So water doesn't act like that. When you've got it moving one direction, and then you've got distance and fall and velocity, it keeps on going. So it's going to go towards that building.
Mr. Higginbotham?
And very small flat is trickling out.
Mr. Higginbotham, I think you had a comment?
Well, I guess it's just sort of a question, trying to understand how we might potentially move forward. So if we were to delay this to, say, the first meeting in May, what information would we have the first meeting in May that we do not have tonight?
Well, you'd have the pipe in the ground, and that drainage issue that he's talking about would totally go away. And then all we need is one good rainstorm to show you what I'm saying is true.
I'm not entirely clear that we can schedule one good rainstorm.
Right, I don't think that, I don't think this has been a problem up until this point. I mean, I think that we had these catastrophic rains in February, it's not like they've had ongoing, ongoing issues, right? This has just been a catastrophic event that happened in February.
Well, supposedly, that pipe, by the information I've got, was blocked ten years ago, and I've never heard of flooding over there. And we know that the city didn't do it, because me and Lee have been here, I think Jamie twenty-five years, and I'm coming up on twenty-two. We didn't do that. So whoever did all those years ago, then why haven't we had a problem until we had exceptional rains in February, January, February?
After the.
And we had to, you know, so, I, you know, I don't know, I would say carrying it over, what's it going to hurt? Because all we'll know is that if he has to have more pump rental, we'll have more information on that, and we'll come to final number. It's up to you guys, I mean, you know, I'm just trying to say that, it's just not, to me, I look at that and I go, that can't be all our fault. We may be partially responsible, but we're not pregnant.
I would like to make some good faith effort towards him at this point. I don't want to leave him hanging for thirty more days, honestly.
Well, I think.
I understand that, but, understand. Okay. Let's say, it's not personally me, I'm just bringing you all the information, but I just look at that lot and I go, you've got to be kidding me. Why is all this water running towards the building? You know?
So is that a motion, Ms. Andrews?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for reimbursement, not to exceed $6,000 with.
Contingent upon.
Contingent upon us having access to the property, right?
No, contingent upon him signing a release.
For future, thank you, that's right, I've got this, yes, that's my motion.
Contingent upon him signing a release and letting access to.
For future damages, to release us from any future damages.
So you feel like, sorry.
So we have a motion?
That's my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Higginbotham, any other comments or questions?
I would.
You look like you're going to ask.
I would just like to say, I'm not opposed to potentially doing something, I do think it's a little hastily, it's a little too hasty right now to do it without fixing at least what, what the property owner was providing as the sole source of the problem versus what we're hearing from, from people within the city about what, you know, what their estimation of the problem is, so. I mean, I'm just, again, I'm not opposed to potentially doing something in the future if what we do clearly doesn't, or, you know, yeah, if it looks like the city truly was the source of the problem.
Well, let me ask this, Ms. Andrews, since you seem to have some information about the pump rental, or remember.
I just, Greg and I both received an email today from Mark about it, that's all I know about it.
So if he continues with the pump rental, this gets carried over until May?
Mm-hmm.
And he has to rent it again?
Mm-hmm, then that adds to.
Can't he just add to the amount that we're reimbursing?
I think he said it was $900 a month, I think that's what I remember, it was somewhere in that range, about $900 to the month.
And I apologize, he asked to be here tonight, and I said no, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I did give him the Zoom, like, is he on the Zoom call? I did give, it's Mark Westfall.
Yeah, I don't see him on there. I think that if in a couple of weeks or a month, we've installed the pipe and it's proven that it was the city's responsibility, we can just add to the total of additional pump rentals and things like that, I don't think. I mean, I guess that's what I'm asking is.
If we vote on it and it does not get approved, does it go away and we have to start over, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. So if we carry it over and if he can continue to pump for the time being while we figure this out, and if it turns out to be the city's responsibility, then that would.
I see, I got you, okay.
Add to his amount for that rental, extra rental, I would think.
But I think if what Greg is saying is that they're going to resolve what the property owner believes to be the sole source of the problem, and then he continues to have a pump rental, I don't feel like at that point, clearly we should be paying for that.
Correct.
So, I mean, in my opinion, he can, once we fix the pipe in the next couple of weeks, hopefully, you know, he can, in my opinion, it would be important for him to just drop the pump rental at that point in time.
Correct, that's, it's up to him as to whether or not he rents the pump.
Correct, correct.
But if it turns out to be the city's problem, then he could add to this request at that time.
Sure.
If it's not the city's problem, then that probably wouldn't be a good idea.
I guess we're just trying to sort out the burden of proof on.
There you go.
Yeah.
All right, so with that, I think we're going to carry this over.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion. I'll withdraw it.
Withdrawn, and we will carry this over.
It was all second.
Yeah. And we will carry this over to the first meeting in May, is probably going to be when it's, the next time we can handle it.
We've worked so hard.
But again, if we fix the pipe and he doesn't have any problems, great, and.
Sure, if we fix the pipe and it solves it, then we know.
And if we don't, if we don't have a hundred year flood.
I think we'll just carry it over here. Because I think we'll probably be here before we're at Finance again. All right, so next item, 060320, request to consider expenditures from E911 and Court Corrections for Public Safety Construction, brought to us by Chief Ross, Chief Nick Hill, Brandon Broadhead, Robert Brigette, and Melody Salter, report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the Finance Committee met and voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item.
All right, we have a recommendation from Finance, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir. Because they were both recommended by the Finance Committee, 060320 and 070320, you put them in one resolution, both transfers.
Okay.
You want to change that, there's no problem.
No, why don't we just do them in one resolution then?
It's basically just amending the budget, both of them are, so that's one.
Okay, so 060320 that we just discussed, and 070320, which is a request to consider increased expenditures for recycling expense due to increased billing for a number of houses serviced, brought to us by Mr. Brigette and Ms. Salter. Why don't we get the report from Finance on that one as well, and then we can vote on the combined resolution?
Sure, thank you, the Finance Committee voted five to zero to approve that item as well.
All right, so we will have a combined resolution for these two. Any questions or comments before we do that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
I had a clarifying question. When we discussed the item about increasing the, I'm sorry.
Number.
The recycling amount, I think there was an element of that that suggested that we were going to also tell them that they had to do more education, am I remembering that incorrectly?
Correct.
You're right.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're.
Following up on that?
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Kendrick, is that something we, I mean, I know we have a contract with them now, and their contract allows them to increase the amount based on the number of households, does it give us the ability to?
Withhold one for the other? Probably not. But we certainly have no problem enforcing the part that we wanted to enforce.
Yeah.
I was of the recollection that that part was deleted until last contract, we very well could be wrong about it. I sent you the contract expires at the end of this year, and we have to give ninety days notice if you're not, if you're not to automatically renew it. So if you move in that direction and you don't want it to be automatic, to give an opportunity to negotiate this and any other points, you probably could go ahead and get notice whenever you desire to do that, just don't let the time slip up, unless you want to renew.
We can look in the contract and see if it's still there, I think they said, meaning that we've told them before about the education, but we, they've come, and I don't think anything's ever really been done. But I mean, if it's in the contract, I can talk to the mayor, JJ, about sending them something or letting them know, but I don't think it's been very effective in the past, so we can try again.
And just to be clear, that's not a part of this item, that's the next time we negotiate the contract, we just need to make sure that item is in there.
The next time, the next time we negotiate with them, we need to have Birmingham Recycling and Recovery at the table as well, we need to be part of this conversation.
And I'll just say that I spoke to Berkeley after the last meeting about this, and he said, one of those trucks is roughly about $300,000 to purchase outright, our contract with Republic is $330,000 a year. So obviously, there's some sort of dumping fees and some other associated costs, but, you know, he didn't sound like he was totally opposed to looking at potentially doing something in-house if we're not getting better response from them.
Okay, but again, that's.
Just a side note, yeah, correct.
We'll talk about that when the time comes up.
Just a reminder that.
Yep.
Because it's later this year, so.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's nine zero, and that's Resolution 2051.
Yes.
All right, the next item is 090320, request to close a section of Oak Grove Road between Raleigh Avenue and Hall Avenue on March 30 for Street Fest, and August 29 for Back to School Bash from 12 to 11 p.m. from Councilors Wolverton and Higginbotham.
Yeah.
And the West Neighborhood Association in Rusty Holly.
So I don't know, since they were bundled, I don't know if we have to start all over again, obviously, we have time, but in light of the current events, the Street Fest is not going to be happening, so there's no need for the closure on that one, so I don't know if this item can be modified to just.
Well, I tell you what, before we do that, let's get the report from Public Safety.
Sorry.
Mr. McCluskey?
Thank you, Mr. President, the Committee met and voted four to zero to recommend approval pending the required police permit.
And so, Mr. Wolverton, are you moving to amend this item to just have it, just have the August 29?
Correct.
Okay.
But I believe, Mr. President, we still don't have confirmation that they have the permitting from Homewood, so we'd need to do the same thing that we've done on the other one.
That would just be from Rusty.
Pending.
So you just want to know, the motion's going to approve then, his motion's going to approve 829 pending police permit?
Yeah, can we do it just like we do with alcohol and beverage?
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion.
All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. McCluskey. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Also nine to zero.
Very helpful that August 29th still happens too.
Let's hope.
Yeah, really.
And that'll be Resolution 2052. Next item, 110320, request for consideration to place video streaming technology in Council Committee room for purpose of recording or broadcasting committee meetings, brought to us by Councilor Higginbotham. We have a report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, the Committee met on the 16th, and voted five to zero to recommend referring the item to the Finance Committee for funding, the motion was made by Ms. Andrews and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham.
All right, so this is just to refer this item to Finance at this point?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero, that goes to Finance. Now we're to, that gets to the Committee referral agenda, do I have a motion to approve the Committee referral agenda?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Higginbotham, second by Mr. McCluskey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero. And we'll talk about Committees at the end, a little bit later. All right, so on to other new business, 200320, request for Council to ratify the mayor's proclamation of existence of local emergency due to the COVID-19 virus issued March 16, 2020, brought to us by Mayor McGrayer. I believe this has been distributed to everybody, are there any questions or comments about it? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Thames.
Second.
Second. Second by Ms. Andrews. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes nine to zero, and that is 2053.
52.
No, 52 was the.
Tier Rock.
All right. Next item, 210320, request for Council to authorize the mayor and city clerk or finance director to expend public funds for budgeted expenses, brought to us by city attorney Mr. Kendrick. I believe this has also been distributed to everyone, Mr. Kendrick, do you need to say anything about it?
No, sir.
Okay, does anyone have any questions about it? All right, if there are no questions, then I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waltney, second by Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes nine to zero. All right, and that'll be 2054. All right, next item is 220320, request to authorize the mayor to sign supplemental agreement with GMC for additional work related to design changes, traffic analysis, and right-of-way acquisition for 18th Street project with AD20% cost match with ALDOT for street improvements along 18th Street and Valley Avenue, brought to us by Mr. Pugh and Keith Strickland of GMC. I believe that these items deal with the continued efforts on the redesign of 18th Street, they are part of the AD20 match with ALDOT, so they will be split, our portion will be the 20%. Does anyone have any questions or comments about it?
Britt, do you know, I was asking Mr. Councilor Wyatt the other day about this item, so does this work all the way from Valley down to downtown, essentially? Is it all one, kind of grouped as one?
Yeah, well, there's a gap from Valley down to Rosedale Boulevard, with the exception
the exception of the right turn lane that's going to be installed on Valley
On Valley.
to allow you to turn onto
Eighteenth, okay.
All right, any other? Mr. Jones?
I believe I'd asked this before, but, so, do we, do we control that light at Valley and Eighteenth Street?
No, it's in Birmingham.
Is there any way that we can communicate with Birmingham that it is not functioning correctly? And, and I'm getting calls about it. I get, I have to sit at that light for so long, and it needs to be updated. And I don't know what we can do, but if, if the mayor or somebody can, can communicate with Birmingham, it would solve a lot of our traffic issues.
Actually, this has been a while back, but this was when former Councilman Hawkins was still with the City of Birmingham. He had, he had me up to their traffic department, and their plan was to install, currently, those lights are loop timed, just, you know, in the pavement, and none of them work.
Right.
And Birmingham had budgeted and planned to modify that intersection to become actually camera timed. I've been watching ever since and haven't seen it happen, but we can certainly try and follow back up with whoever the new contact is over there and see where on the schedule that is.
It's probably James Fowler, that's who you talked to.
And, and I remember Keith Strickland talking about upgrade, having Birmingham upgrade those lights as part of that project, or doing something.
Birmingham has another project that's coming south of, and what is, that point is Twentieth Street. They're actually going to be reducing the number of lanes coming up Twentieth Street that, that will involve tweaking the intersection. It's not going to be timed exactly with our project. It'll be a little later than ours, but, so I think probably the best course of action is, is to get in touch with them now and see what needs to be done with the intersection.
Okay, thank you.
I'm happy to follow up on that, too.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Thames. Any other questions or comments? All right. Then I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Thames, second by Mr. Waltney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's also nine to zero, and will be twenty fifty-five. All right, next item, twenty-three oh three twenty, request to authorize the mayor to sign contract with GMC for construction engineering services for the Eighteenth Street project. This is dealing with another portion of the project that deals with the construction engineering services, which is GMC going out there and making sure everything's done correctly during construction. Any questions or comments from anybody about that? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
By Mr. Thames.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine to zero, and will be resolution twenty fifty-six. All right, next item, twenty-four oh three twenty, request to cancel all April twenty twenty meetings of City of Homewood boards and their committees. These meetings will be moved to May for their first scheduled meetings, brought to us by Council President Wright and Mr. Kendrick. So, this will apply to all of the various boards, so that they're not meeting in April because they're not required to. We will still have our council meetings in April because we are still required to. So, but this will just refer to the boards, planning commission, all of that stuff, anything other than city council. Yes, sir, Mr. Jones?
Just a question. As it relates to the city council meetings, can, can we also add to that that, you know, it, we need approval from either you as president pro temp or Mr. Wright to approve the agenda, so we're only dealing with essential items during that month?
Correct. And, and we're going to talk about that at the end a little bit.
Okay.
But yes, we're, the plan is for the city council to, once we've gotten sort of all this stuff out of the way, is that, is for April that we would meet remotely and only do those items that were essential and/or dealt with COVID-19.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Okay, so, back to item twenty-four oh three twenty, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCloskey, second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's nine to zero, twenty fifty-seven, the resolution number for that. All right, next item, twenty-five oh three twenty, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for period of March ten, twenty twenty through March thirty, twenty twenty. Mr. Jones, is that Ms. Smith that stood?
That's Ms. Smith.
It is. And I just had a few tiny things that Robert and Berkeley answered for me, so I would move that we approve the vouchers for the period noted.
All right, motion by Ms. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Who is that? Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Second by Mr. Higginbotham. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also nine to zero, and that'll be twenty fifty-eight. All right, next item is twenty-six oh three twenty, request for consideration to amend fiscal year nineteen twenty E nine one one fund budget to fund possible dispatch overtime from Brandon Broadhead, Robert Brigette, and Melody Salter. I believe this was also distributed around. Ms. Salter, do you have explanation, little explanation for it?
Traditionally, even though over the, certain dispatchers are assigned to nine-one-one and not paid out of the general fund budget, but overtime for even those dispatchers are paid out of the general fund. But because of this crisis, and also the fact that we're, we have a low, right now, we need to hire dispatchers. We may need to utilize fire and some other people that can do dispatch, and so Brandon said that is eligible to be expended on nine-one-one. So, he wanted to move some from carrier fund balance to overtime and nine-one-one to help out the general fund police overtime. We wouldn't use it if we didn't need it, but, but we could save potential of needing it, and it is an eligible expense to use our restricted fund and help our general fund.
Thank you. Any questions about that? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McCloskey, second by Mr. Waltney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that is also nine to zero, and will be twenty fifty-nine. All right, before we move on to any comments, let me note what we just talked about a little bit, which is that the, we do, we will have two council meetings for April, but unless something unexpected comes up, the plan is to do those meetings remotely, and then under the governor's order, we should be allowed to do that as long as we're only dealing with essential business functions and COVID-19 issues. That is the plan, and the agenda will probably be limited to those items, like set unless something comes up that's unexpected. In addition, we will not have committee meetings in April. The next committee meetings will be in May, and again, we'll deal with whatever comes up in council as needed with regard to essential business functions and COVID-19 issues. Hopefully, in May, we'll be able to start with committees again. So, anything that is in committee or has gone, has been referred to committee tonight, it won't be handled until May. It'll sit in committee until that time. So, no need to, well, there's no need to set, even set committee meetings tonight. We can do that at the last meeting in April when we'll be remotely.
Have we looked at the agendas to make sure there was nothing pressing left on a committee agenda?
There was a review of it. If anyone sees something that, if any of the committee heads see something that is not, that needs to be dealt with, let me know. But it didn't appear to be anything that needed to be done.
There's nothing on public safety.
Before May. Sure.
So, the three items that were referred to special issues, they're, they're just going to special issues to deal with in May. Is that, is that, okay?
That's correct. They're, they're going to committee, it's just the committee won't meet again in May. And if there is something that needs to be dealt with urgently, then we'll deal with it in council. Any questions about that?
So, the April meetings are going to be on April thirteenth and twentieth, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and we're going to do those remote, totally remotely?
April thirteenth and twentieth, so one week apart, not twenty-seventh.
April thirteenth and twenty-seventh, sorry.
And Alex?
Yeah, Mr. Wright?
Peter, and, and just, if we do have critical issues, I know we don't know exactly what's going to happen over the next month. We can all keep in mind that essential functions of government, and with, with the help of our city attorney, can be a broad definition. Not that we want to get too broad with it, but just, but if, if something is an emergency and it doesn't fall into that important governmental functions issue, we'll, we'll consider, you know, what to do about it. But that we will attempt to meet remotely for all the obvious reasons and, and try broadly at the order that we got from the governor and important government functions. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. So, with that, we'll go to comments.
The mayor's audio, he said.
Oh, is the mayor?
He said he's listening via audio.
Mayor, would you like to make any comments?
He might be, he texted him, he said he was on audio.
I see, I see his thing on there, but it may be muted.
Might have to unmute it.
Okay.
Oh, so mayor, you can hit star six if you want to unmute yourself.
This is the operator. Please press star six.
We'll, we'll break back in with the mayor. Well, now you seem to be unmuted. Mayor, are you there? Okay, we'll get back to you.
I'll text him and say, do you want to make a comment? We all gone?
There you go. In the meantime, Mr. Waltney, would you like to make a comment?
It's nice not to have to set a meeting. It was also nice getting out of the house, even though we're six feet apart. I will add, I would like to give a shout out to Public Works, Berkeley and his crews. As people have stayed home, you obviously all probably noticed the piles of, of discarded items. I think our friend Pappy has probably done very well driving around and picking up stuff in Homewood, but I'm thankful that they're out there picking up stuff, because a lot of people were taking this opportunity to clean up. So, keeps our city pretty.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thames?
The same thing, and, and President Wright mentioned it, city services continue. So, if you see a city employee, thank them. They're doing their job. They're doing a great job. We, myself and some other old men were sitting out on Eighteenth Street the other day and noticed the bench we were sitting on was broken. They had the brand-new bench repaired and installed the next day. So, one, the service was fantastic, but two, it allows our restaurants on Eighteenth to provide a place for people to go pick up food, go outside, sit down, and eat it. So, it's more important now than ever. So, big thanks to them, and if you, if you see one, just tell them thank you. Our, our city employees generally. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thames. We're all scattered all over the place here, so I guess we'll go do the traditional order. Mr. Higginbotham, have you got anything?
Mr. Chairman, I think I would only echo the comments about the outstanding work of our employees. And, gosh, I would also thank people in the private sector for making it possible for other people to stay home, including restaurants that deliver and let you pick up. And those clerks at the grocery stores are having to, you know, ring up the morning rush of toilet paper that came in the night before that is all gone in eight minutes. So, there are a lot of people that are going above and beyond, I think, at this time, and I know we all appreciate what they're doing.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
I will second that, and just also ask anybody that, that might be tuning in tonight or any of us that haven't, or would like to try and go around town and support some of those other local businesses that are still, still operating, but in a much different fashion than they are used to. We have tried to do that ourselves, and I think I've literally gained five pounds in the last week, but that's okay. I've got some time, I just need to, to go burn it off now. So, I also want to kind of give a shout out to DJ Sills, who's been doing club quarantine over, over Facebook Live for the last couple of weeks. He plans on continuing that probably four to five days a week, maybe until we get out of this thing. So, it's been a, it's been a fun release. It's been fun to see people get on there and kind of band together and be able to burn off some stress and, and enjoy each other's company through a different medium. So, that's it.
All right, thank you.
And
Yep.
And my, my son turned one on, on Monday last week.
Already?
Already. We took, I took him, I took him to the, to the pediatrician this morning for his checkup. They're all, yeah, everything's different. I mean, our pediatrician, Jeff, lives in Homewood. I've known him for a long time. He came in there looking like he was on a hazmat team. So, it's just, I mean, it's changing the world, you know, all over the place right now, so.
President Wyatt, the mayor said he tried to do the star six to unmute, but it wasn't working. But he said just to, just he wanted to say he had nothing except thanks to all of you for a great job under difficult circumstances. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, sorry we couldn't get the technology worked out right, but we do appreciate you sending the message. So, Mr. McCloskey?
Yes, I would also like to echo and thanks to the, all the Homewood City employees and services that are still currently working, and of course, all of us that are reaching out to each other on a daily basis, because we know that our constituents have a lot of questions, a lot of concerns about the things that are going on. And, and, you know, we're, we're doing the, the best we can to, to respond to them and, and take care of the things that need to be taken care of. To echo what Andrew said, we need to continue to eat local as best we can. You know, it's not, it's not like we can continue to eat out every single day, but, you know, whatever we can do to help out the, the restaurants and the, the businesses in Homewood that are still open for business at the time being, please do so. And please keep checking, this is for the constituents, please keep checking all of the, the information that'll be on social media, whether it's the city website or any of our various social media pages or whatever for information as it comes out. We try and do our best to, to keep them updated. So, if there's a change in, in something, we'll, we will certainly update that as needed. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I was so happy that we were able to honor Coach Sills, almost like on the last meeting we had before the shutdown. So, it was nice to honor him. But as it relates to the Board of Education, I really appreciated the last bit of communication that went out about seniors who were, you know, really having a tough time to not be able to finish their senior year. And so, I thought it was a promising and encouraging message, and, you know, I think we all, we all need that. And, and I appreciate all of you tonight coming out. I mean, we, everybody is kind of thriving for some type of normalcy, and maybe this isn't normal for us to be scattered all over the room. But, but I feel like we need to come together for our constituents and say that it's going to be okay, and we, we appreciate everyone's patience as we work through this, and we'll get through it. So, thank you again. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Same. Our police officers, our firefighters, our first responders who are out there having to deal with all kinds of issues, like, you know, trying to make sure people are staying apart on the trail. And my son said today, he saw police officers out there today just making sure that everybody was kind of keeping their distance. So, for all the weird things that they're having to do that they don't normally have to have as part of their days, and, and of course, the, the sanitation workers and the guys who are keeping the, you know, medians trimmed and all the things that they're doing because they can't stop working because they have to keep working. And then also, you know, Jennifer and I worked really, really hard with our committee to come up with lots of great census plans that have been shuttered. And so, I would just encourage everybody who's on this call, whoever they are, complete your census. Jennifer and I both started posting on social media, trying to get people to use this time inside to complete their censuses. And as of like the very first week, we were, the City of Homewood was actually ahead of the state in terms of census responses. So, want to encourage people, well, want to encourage people to keep that happening, and at least we have our signs out for what that's worth. So, do your census.
And I will say, I was on a conference call right before this meeting for, with my Leadership Birmingham class, and that's our project is census. And Alabama is actually ahead of the national average right now. So, go figure. We're at thirty-five and a half percent that have participated at this point, which is amazing. Go Alabama, so.
What's the deadline?
Oh, it's going to be extended into July.
That's what I figured.
The field workers won't go out in May. They were supposed to go out in May. They won't go out. It's, it's probably, we're looking at August, end of August. But still, just that conversation, keep that conversation going, census. Yeah, so today I had a curb cut that was, I had a curb that was damaged. Someone sent to me, and I sent it to, thinking it was Spire, sent it to Spire and copied Berkeley. Spire, who has been amazing lately, really, in Miller Pipe, got back to me, said, oh, it's not us. And before I could even reply to that email, Berkeley had already had it's not us, and before I could even reply to that email, Berkeley had already had somebody out there fixing it, so that's, these guys are just really doing great work and I really appreciate it. I also want to thank Debbie Fout, who's always just so amazing, but my neighbor, I know you guys have told y'all this, Dr. Ellen Eaton is in the infectious disease department at UAB, and she's been really an important voice during the last few weeks, she's on the Birmingham Task Force, and she's put out a lot of information on Facebook, so if you guys are not following her, go follow her. She organized a PPE drive for the last two weekends, and Lori Stoney and I, Battalion Chief Lori Stoney and I, worked to get a place for drop off, and Debbie stepped up and let us use the library, so Ellen had volunteers out there coming by and folks were dropping off, and they really have gathered a lot of PPE on that, so I want to thank Debbie, I want to thank Lori Stoney, I want to thank the mayor and the chief of police. We had a long conversation last week about the Lake Shore Trail, and no surprise, it is jam-packed, it is jam-packed, not a lot of social distancing going on last week, so it was a very thoughtful conversation, and Mayor, I just want to thank you so much, I, I know how much you have on your plate right now, and anyway, it just is a hard, how do you balance, how do you balance what, what the decision was going to be, and so he spoke with Ellen, who's also a runner, and they came up with a plan, and I love it, and I appreciate that and their thoughtfulness, and also Chief Ross for that, too. I want to wish our teachers good luck next week as we head into the unknown of e-learning, and then I want, Alex, you, you want me to leave this one for you, Chamber, call tomorrow?
Sure, whichever way.
Looking forward to our president pro tem moderating a great call we're going to have tomorrow with Chamber of Commerce and many local folks, I want to thank Patrick and Brett, Ellen will be on that call, and so we've lined up a fantastic group of people to talk with, so I'll let you take it from there.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Harden, I think you're still on here, would you, do you have any comments there? You are?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm, I'm grateful to be here, it is a little unusual, you'll find when you do this Zoom, you kind of feel like you're almost a part of it, but not quite. I do hope that, you know, as the longer this goes, the more I'm concerned about our merchants in, in Homewood, and, and how do they survive through this, there's obviously a lot of government help, I hope they're all looking at that, not, you know, the SBA is, is certainly trying to help, so I'm, I'm concerned about them, as the longer this goes, the more these retailers in particular are going to be hurt, but I think it's everybody. But anyway, I'm grateful to be here, I know there's a lot that's taking place with the mayor and, and Jefferson County, and, and I was, like Jennifer, I was on that call the other day, and, and there were a lot of really high-powered people in the city on that call, and, and, you know, we got, we got a tough train coming at us, so we just need to keep praying for our city, our country, and, and the people here.
Thank you very much. McKeever Wright, do you want to say anything?
First of all, let me thank you, Alex, for handling the meeting, helping to organize the meeting, guys, it, it takes a lot of time and coordination to do all of this, thanks to Brian, thanks to Mike Kendrick, keeping up with all the various orders coming out of the state, trying to stay on top of it, what we can do, what we can't do, and thanks to all of you able to participate tonight, and I know we've got, you know, at, at a minimum many weeks ahead, and let's hope it's, it's only weeks, so I just really do want to extend the thanks for all of that, and also just to echo seeing the garbage being picked up, you know, when it's supposed to, and our police and fire, who I know are out there, and also, we have a lot of, we have a lot of residents in our city who are on the front line of this down at our hospitals, and I just want to, you know, take a moment to thank them for what they are doing already, and really to point out that they have weeks ahead, and so you all just keep those friends and neighbors in our thoughts and prayers as we go through this, this next month and thereafter. Also want to thank the mayor, who I've been communicating with just about on a daily basis, and, and let everyone know that he and others are keeping a close watch, we're certainly staying in touch with the county health officer, I know you all are as well, and keeping on top of everything, and just to let the know, the residents know that we are paying attention to everything as it develops and trying to weigh both the, obviously the importance, as Mr. Harden pointed out, of getting our businesses back, you know, back in business, and at the same time, recognizing the health concerns that are serious and are, are out there, making sure we make the right decisions for our, our local residents. And guys, it's, it's a, it's a pleasure working with you all through all of this, and let's do as, as Mr. McCluskey said, let's all keep in touch, keep social distance in place, it works, and they're preaching it, and throughout the country, so please, people, continue to do that. And also, my last point is to you all and the residents as well, to communicate through your local council members, which I think our city knows how to do pretty well, and for you all to continue to communicate and use the website as really a good resource to communicate with our residents about all the developments as they, as they come about, and, and, and again, we're, we're going to keep a close eye and close watch and remain in contact with all the health officers, and certainly do everything we need to do to protect our community, and thank you again, Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, I'll start and pick up with what Ms. Andrews was talking about, we, the Chamber is having a Zoom conference webinar, video, whatever you want to call it, through Zoom tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM. They, I'm going to, I have the privilege of moderating it, it's going to have Ellen Eaton from UAB, and it will have the mayor and a number of city councilors on there, as well as members of the fire department to talk about the current status in the city, and perhaps most importantly, for the businesses of the Chamber, is going to have Kyle Smith, Barry's husband, who's going to talk about the new employment laws that have been passed, dealing with the new unemployment laws and paid leave and all of those things, and then we are going to have Dee Dee Piazza, an accountant, we're going to have a representative from Tom Carruthers, who's, will be there from Regions Bank, and a representative from Senator Jones' office that will also talk about the SBA loans that are available to Homewood small businesses, and both, they're two different kinds, the kind that's not forgivable and the kind that hopefully will be forgiven at the end of everything, and help, help the businesses learn what they need to do to, to get those loans, to get them through this difficult time. I would also just echo what everyone else has said, thank you to all the city employees who have kept things going and done such a good job, and I can't imagine what it would be like if they weren't there, and, you know, they'd make it possible for the rest of us to stay home and stay safe, and to that point, please, everyone, continue to do that, I've been on some of these calls that, that people have been talking about with the Health Department, and, you know, they, the one thing they, they say every time is, the only thing that is stopping this right now is staying home and, and social distancing, that those are the, those are the two things that you've got to do in order to just not come into contact with it. I had someone ask me the other day, what can I do to help, and I said, what you can do to help is not get contaminated, because if you don't get it, then that means anyone you're near is not going to get into, and, and then those people aren't going to give it to anybody else, so the more you do that, the, the better off we are, and then, lastly, thank you to all of y'all for coming out tonight, thank you to Mr. Kendrick and Melody and Brian as well for coming out, this is a little bit of a bizarre way to meet with half here, people on Zoom, it's not ideal, it doesn't work terribly well, but we, all of you helped to make it work and got through what we needed to get through, so I very much appreciate that, and so with that, we will adjourn the meeting, and we will see, talk to everyone in April.